Good evening, everybody. This is the advertised time and place for the November 7th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Please join me in reciting the pledge allegiance with the board.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start out with public hearings. The number one item is Susan McCarthy for a minor subdivision with Heather Trojanowski.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Heather Trojanowski, planner for the town of Riverhead. This is a public hearing for a minor subdivision application seeking approval to subdivide a 21,083 square foot improved parcel into two lots with lot one having an area of 12,271 square feet, and that lot would retain an existing single-family residence, and lot two would have an area of 8,816 square feet and would be a residential building lot located at 934 Sound Shore Road in Jamesport, more particularly identified as Suffolk County tax map number 600-8-1-35, located on the north side of Sound Shore Road within the RA40 zoning use district. And as the board knows, just to recap, the zoning board of appeals did grant the relief that was required for this minor subdivision for the lot area and lot width and impervious surface coverage by appeal number 2024-021 dated September 12th of 2024, and that has allowed the applicant to proceed with the minor subdivision application and why we're having this public hearing today. I believe the applicant and their representatives are here if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Heather. Would anybody like to speak?
Charles Cuddy, I represent the applicant. Mr. McCarthy is here with me, and also Tom Wobert. This is site that has public water, as Heather just indicated. The zoning board in September granted our variance for these lots. The lots really are already recognized by the town. They each have a number. One is on Sound Shore Road, the other's on Bayberry Lane. The Sound Shore one is the one that's vacant at this point. Mr. McCarthy wants to build for one of his sons on that lot. I think it's appropriate. We've gone through this before, but I think it's an appropriate division, and I would ask the board to approve it.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
No hands up.
No hands up. No other speakers? All right. Can we get somebody to...
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved in second. May we have a vote? Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Onto public hearing number two, Riverhead Mazda with Matt Charters. Good evening, Matt.
All right. For the record, Matt Charters, senior planner for the town of Riverhead. I will read the public hearing notice into the record and then turn things over to the applicant. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held before the planning board of the town of Riverhead at Riverhead Town Hall for West Second Street, Riverhead, New York, Thursday, the 7th day of November, 2024, at 6 o'clock PM. To consider the site plan application entitled Riverhead Mazda, which proposes to construct a 21,914 square foot gross floor area car dealership with service area, including off-street parking, landscaping, onsite drainage, and other related site improvements, within an approximately 10.59 acre property currently improved with two buildings dedicated to automobile sales and with vehicle storage in the rear of the property within the Business Center B.C. zoning use district, Citouette at 1423 Old Country Road, Riverhead, more particularly identified as Suffolk County tax map numbers 600-108-2-3.3 and 17.1. The applicant's representative to go through the site plan with you guys, which is up on the screen.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Good evening. Dan Pefferero with Key Civil Engineering, 664 Blue Point Road, Holsfield. The subject parcel is currently home to the existing Ford and GMC dealerships. Our proposal involves constructing a new approximately 22,000 square foot Mazda dealership, which is situated primarily behind the GMC building. In addition to the new dealership, we're planning a reconfiguration of the existing parking lot to improve traffic flow and define the parking areas better than the existing conditions for each of the three buildings. As part of the redesign, we're incorporating several landscape islands in front of the Mazda building in between the two existing buildings that more clearly define the way that traffic is supposed to flow in those areas and also to provide some opportunity to landscape and beautify the site. The new development will have less impervious coverage than the existing site layout, which will result in less stormwater runoff. The area in front of the GMC and Ford dealerships will largely remain unchanged with a few key improvements. These include the installation of landscaping along Old Country Road, the formalization of the existing layout in front of the Ford dealership through the use of striping, and the creation of a hardscape area beside the GMC building. These modifications will help create a more organized and clearly defined circulation path for vehicular traffic. The proposed layout complies with town requirements for guard setbacks, landscaping, parking, screening, and other applicable standards with no variances. 205 parking stalls are required where 205 parking stalls are provided. A maximum of 75% of the site can be in imperviousness. We're proposing 53%. New 10-foot landscape buffer is proposed adjacent and west of the proposed Mazda building, and new ADA compliant parking stalls are being provided for all three buildings. Additionally, the existing trash enclosure is going to be removed and relocated to a new, more appropriate location behind the Ford building, and for safety and visibility, new dark sky compliant LED lighting will be proposed in the area of the Mazda building at 16-foot mounting height. In summary, the development will improve both functionality and appearance of the site, reduce impervious surfaces, and comply with all zoning and landscaping regulations. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Anybody from the audience would like to comment?
Dan, just a couple. The back area, are you going to keep as the stone parking not to be blocked out?
Correct. There is a portion behind the Mazda building that we're proposing to asphalt, but for the most part, that rear area will remain existing.
One other question. When you get truck, car deliveries, is there any way you can make sure that the trucks go out the rear entrance so they can catch the light on Pulaski? Tom?
Tom, it's a public hearing. You have to come up, state your name, and then speak into the mic, please.
Tom Williams from Riverhead Mazda. We have, the truck drivers change all the time, so we do educate them every time they come. They pull it off at 58. We leave plenty of access to them to get through the property, and we instruct them that they can exit out the back, make a right, and come out to the light up on 58. So, you know, do we get some that go the wrong way or try and back at, and we stop them when we see them? They park in 58. We tell them you can't park there, but you know, they just, it's not like the old days where Ford and GM and Mazda contracted with a major car carrier to bring the cars out. Now they're just all, who shows up with what? You never, half the trucks aren't even, shouldn't even be on the road. But yes, we do instruct them to go out the back.
It would just be so much easier going out the back.
Yes, and the way it's designed and laid out, it doesn't give them really room to turn around, so they're going to have to go to the back to a staging area, and it's going to line them right up to exit onto Pulaski Street. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any Zoomers?
No one with their hand raised.
Okay, board members?
Good.
No, not this time. Somebody wants to close.
I'll move to close the public hearing for Riverhead Mazda, so move.
Second. Moved in second. May we have a vote, please? Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Moving on to item number three for a public hearing, Carson Woods Major Subdivision with Greg Bergman.
Thank you. For the record, Greg Bergman, senior planner with the Riverhead Planning Department, and I did receive the affidavit of posting and mailings as required by the subdivision hearing. This is a public hearing on a eight-lot major subdivision called Carson Woods Major Subdivision. It is a 19.95 acre parcel, which is located at both the terminus of Zimacki Lane and Fox Lane. It is located within the agricultural protection zone of the APZ zoning use district. As the board real call, just a brief history on the application. By Resolution 23-095 dated November 2nd, 2023, the board approved an as-of-right nine-lot yield map. At that same meeting, by Resolution 23-096, the board approved an eight-lot sketch plan, which was compliant with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. By Resolution Number 24-044 dated June 14th, 2024, the board classified the application as an unlisted action pursuant to secret and initiated a coordinated review with involved agencies. By Resolution 24-074 dated October 3rd, 2024, the board assumed lead agency and issued a negative declaration, and by Resolution 24-075 dated October 3rd, we scheduled this public hearing. As required by the agricultural protection zone, the application does propose a cluster subdivision. The application proposes to develop approximately 36% of the property with the eight residential lots and extension of the Fox Lane right-of-way and provide an onsite stormwater recharge basin. The northern portion of the property, which is identified as open space on the preliminary plat, is about 12.8 acres in size, which equates to about 64.1% of the parcel being preserved. We received reports from the Riverhead Water District identifying what will require to serve the project with potable water. We received comments from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. They issued a no effect finding stating that no archaeological or historic resources would be impacted by the proposed development. It was considered a matter for local determination by the Suffolk County Planning Commission and otherwise fully complies with all the regulations of the APZ zoning district and the cluster regulations of the town code.
Does the latest rendition include the 50-foot buffer on the eastern portion?
Yes, it does. If you'll see on the map that it's located on the top portion of that picture, that is the eastern portion of the property, bless you, and that is a 50-foot buffer, which will preserve that existing tree line. As you're coming west on Main Road, you will still see that buffer of trees. That's the subdivision application in a nutshell. We do have the attorney for the applicant, Martin Finnegan, here if he wants to add anything. If the board has any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, we can open it up for the public.
There was a question, I think, about fencing on the properties.
So fencing, this is something that we've sort of dealt with a couple of times through cluster subdivision. Obviously, when we get to any types of approvals, they would have to file covenants on that open space. It would be my recommendation that no structures, fencing, et cetera, be placed in that open space, and we did something similar with the Villas at Roanoke. We required fencing to be installed with it, you know, on the individual residential lots to sort of prevent that gradual encroachment where someone just goes and clears a couple of trees, and eventually there's no buffer left. So that would be a recommendation that I would absolutely, you know, continue through with this. Just think it's good planning practice. Beyond that, if there's any questions the board may have, or if we'd like to open it up to the public.
Anybody from the audience like to speak?
Good evening. Martin Finnegan, 13250 Main Road, Matatauck for the applicant, Crossroads Atlantic. Greg stole a lot of my thunder there, so I'm not going to belabor the point. I just wanted to first mention that I'm joined this evening by the project engineers from BBV, and they're available to answer any questions the board may have. You know, this is a very straightforward eight-lot subdivision. As you pointed out, it will be buffered from the eastern end to preserve that scenic vista coming down the main road and protect the existing agricultural operation there. The vast majority of the property, as Greg pointed out, will remain as open space per code, and it is really tightly designed just as a sort of a seamless extension of Fox Lane. Yeah, as noted, there was a negative declaration, which is a finding by the board that they're not expected to result, the project's not going to result in any negative environmental impacts. We did receive comments from the town engineer just today. We've, as Greg noted, have prior comments from the water district, and I think we're waiting for a few more comments from the fire marshal and fire district. However, the applicant is prepared to address those comments and make any required changes to satisfy the town engineer moving forward, obviously subject to any additional comments we might get this evening.
Thank you. Sure.
Hello, my name is Scott Gammon. I own the orchard to the west of the development, and this is my first time seeing the map. You said about the buffer to the east. There's no buffer to the west between my property. I spray late at night, early in the morning, and I'm concerned that it's going to really affect the neighbors or going to be, it might be some hostility or it might make my job more difficult. And I was curious, I was told a while back that there had any existing, like farm operation, there has to be like some kind of buffer between. I don't know if that's true or not, a buffer, a natural buffer left between the development and the existing agricultural operation. I'm not quite sure, but I've...
So there's no code requirement for a buffer between the agricultural operation and the residential operation? It's something that the board has done with the subdivisions? Because it's located within proximity to an active agricultural operation, there will need to be specific notations on the map regarding right-to-farm practices, and those will also have to be recorded in deed restrictions on the property, basically giving any property owner who purchased one of the, purchases one of the lots if they're located within proximity to an agricultural operation.
Greg, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing. We do need you up there, I'm sorry.
Kind of forgot what I said from the beginning there, but so, no, there is no code requirement for a vegetative buffer between an agricultural operation and a residential use. There are requirements in the town code, I believe it's chapter 201, section four, if I'm not mistaken. It requires specific notations to be put on a subdivision map, giving notice that any property owner is within a certain distance of an active agricultural operation, and there can be noise, odors, dust, et cetera. And there will also be, as a requirement of the town code, they have to file deed restrictions on those properties, basically giving any potential purchaser, again, putting them on notice that they are within proximity to an active agricultural operation. That being said, I think if the board wants to consider some type of buffer, it would probably be good practice. You know, if they want to put a 25-foot buffer on that western property, that might be reasonable. I think they still have pretty nice-sized building envelopes on the property, but I mean, that's something we can discuss as we get towards approvals.
Greg, I kind of agree with that. Being a local farm family, there are sometimes problems with spray, spray materials, and everything else. A 25-foot buffer would not be bad.
It's, excuse me, there's other neighbors involved, too, that if you could just isolate it a little bit, everybody might be able to, you know, change is difficult for everybody, and I understand progress is progress, you can't stop it, but if it could mitigate the effect on other people's property, I think it would be a good thing, even if they squished it and made it wider. I don't know. I don't know, I'm not a developer.
And the thing is, it's a wooded area anyway, so it's just, all it does require is not taking down 20...
Leave the existing vegetation, some there, just for a little space, make everybody happy, them and me.
Ed, I don't know what you think about that, just...
Yeah, I like it.
All right, thank you for your time.
It's only a public hearing now, and we're taking input from people, and I think you got a good idea, they appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
My name is Larry Kaiser. I live on 32 Zimacki Lane, Jamesport. My eyes aren't what they used to be. Is there any way we could zoom in on the map? Because it's the first time I've ever seen this plot layout, or may I come to the table? My question directly relates to any buffer on the south side of the development and where the stormwater relocation basin is.
He can talk into the mic there. He can talk into that mic.
Recharge area.
Okay, so this is Fox Lane coming in?
This is Fox Lane, and this is...
Where is Zimacki? It's right here.
Correct.
All right. What's the approximate? Okay, I see it right here, 28,000 square foot lot size, 30,000. My biggest concern...
You have to speak into the microphone, sir.
Just trying to expedite time. My biggest concern is that there be something in play for perpetuity, like was brought up, mentioned before, that the homeowners who purchased the properties, two, three, five years later, decide they want a little bit more open space. I've been a contractor in this town for 30-some odd years. I've seen it happen. I've worked with the DEC because people have encroached on DEC lands, so I think it's very important that the town adhere to this practice of putting in the deed these covenants and restrictions.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Larry, I think also, where you see the catch basin, I believe, Greg, you do, they are treed also, right?
Yes, there are screening requirements for recharge basins.
You know, inside defense, Larry, that's going to be...
Yeah, so in the town of Riverhead, road and drainage standards, there are planting requirements and screening requirements for town recharge basins.
Thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Anybody else would like to speak? You have to ask at the microphone, it's a public hearing. Take your time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here, I'm just, I've been here four years. I'm from Queens.
It's okay, you still have to give your name and address.
Yeah, I'm on 61 Fox Lane, and you know, we, when I bought the...
Your name, sir?
My name is John.
John?
John Marana.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm not a good speaker. But you know, when I bought this house, you know, I have grandchildren. It's a cul-de-sac, it's dead end. It was beautiful, you know, the kids playing out front of the house. I don't have to watch the kids, you know, getting hit by a car, you know, God forbid. I loved it. I fell in love with the house. I bought it. Now, these big guys come here and, you know, they want to do what they want to do. I don't think that's fair. What do you think?
Well, they do have property rights.
I understand, but you're taking my, you're taking my, how would I say? You're taking, you're taking my, you need something?
No, I mean, I can address your, I can address your comment.
Like what?
I can just get up to the mic and address the board.
I mean, first of all, we were never, we were never, nobody had notices of what was going on.
Oh, this thing's been in the process for years, I mean...
But don't the homeowner supposed to get something?
This is a public hearing, you're here. Did you get notice of this?
You're here.
For this, for today, but the other ones, we never got notice.
We require notice at preliminary plat. So that's, the purpose of this public hearing is for this preliminary plat to be served.
Greg, I do have to...
You said there was other meetings, there was also other meetings there that were taking place, that passed this and that?
Yep.
But we weren't, you know, we had no notices of that.
You're required to be, you're required to be noticed for the preliminary plat public hearing, which is what we're having today.
That's it, just today.
First public hearing, that's right now.
Okay, I didn't know, I'm sorry, I'm not a lawyer. But anyway, you know, so I came here, I have, you know, five grandchildren, and you know, I saw the house, I fell in love with it. Now, you know, you're taking away my, you know, we had the animals come, we got deers in the back, we got turkeys, we got all these beautiful birds. Now, we're not going to see them no more. You know, I come from the city to come to the country. You know what I mean? So...
I know exactly what you mean. I just had a subdivision approved in my backyard, where all the wild animals are.
You know...
So I get it, but these people own property, they pay taxes, they put proposals that do meet the code. You know, we just try to make them better, make them function better, make the site plans better, but people do have property rights.
But the street is going to have enough room for the traffic to go in and out?
If I could just, yeah, you mentioned a couple of things.
So I did receive some correspondence this morning and last week from neighboring residences on Fox Lane, so I went and pulled the subdivision file for the Manor Lane Estates situated at Jamesport, which is the subdivision that was approved for the Fox Lane subdivision. That application was filed, it was approved by the planning board, I believe, in 1989, and then filed with the Suffolk County Clerk in November of 1990. That map at that time, both the final plat and the road and drainage plans call that a temporary cul-de-sac, and the road and drainage plan includes a note that the temporary cul-de-sac is to be removed when parcel to the east is subdivided and street is put through. So through the planning process, there was always contemplated, I mean, going back now 34 years, there was a future subdivision. The planning board at the time realized that there was subdivision potential. Fox Lane is designed as a town roadway, it meets, fully meets the requirements for road standards for a subdivision, and when we review subdivisions, we create logical extensions for future subdivisions. So that's exactly what happened in this case. I am understanding that people had the benefit of living on a dead-end street. Again, we're talking about eight single-family residences, we're not creating a main thoroughfare. It does not have any other connection to any major, you know, roadway where the people are going to be using this to kind of cut through traffic. The proposed development would basically be commensurate, I believe there's 10 houses on Fox Lane, there's only eight on here, so there would be less traffic generated from those new eight houses than there would be from the existing residences, but again, there was, when we talk about planning and future planning, there was a logical extension. So Fox Lane was determined even 34 years ago that this would be the extension and would serve the future subdivision.
Thank you.
How big is the street? The right-of-way is 55.
Guys, please, you have to speak at the microphone, it's law.
I'd like to know, how big is this, how big is the street, the actual street that we have now?
I believe it's 28 feet.
28? I don't know, I heard by law it's supposed to be 55?
The right-of-way is 55.
No, it's not supposed to be 55. So your two cars, two cars would be, it'd be available, it'd be enough?
Correct.
All right. Like I said, I don't know the laws. So that's, you know...
Well, I think we did here tonight, we're going to talk about buffers and stuff, so like I said, try to make it...
But you know, the whole point is, you know, I bought this house, I paid money for this house. You know, I came here to have a better life for my kids and my grandchildren. Now, you know, when I tell people it's a dead-end street, oh, they love it, oh, you're the best, beautiful, now, you know, we're not going to have that no more. The kids got to stay on the property.
But it is, but it is a town road, though, sir.
I understand.
It is a town road.
I understand.
And, you know, understand what you're saying, but the people that own the property do have the right to subdivide.
I know.
And trust me, they're going to do a nice job.
And these homes, they're going to be large homes, so...
No idea, that's not...
That's not our priority, purview.
Thank you, anyway. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Courtney Ferland. I live at 74 Fox Lane, so I'm currently the last house in the cul-de-sac, and from what it looks like right now, I'll have two new neighbors looking into my backyard, so I ask that you please consider having a natural buffer to the west side of the property as well to maintain my peaceful, quiet yard as I currently have it. So I'm a little nervous.
Take your turn.
I just love my home so much, and I want as little disruption as possible. So from the way that it seems right now, there's little concern for the existing residents that about the proposed development and that currently lives there. that about the proposed development and that currently live on Fox Lane. It's a little disappointing, and as the plan stands right now, I'll soon have two new new neighbors whose homes will look directly into my backyard, and a fire hydrant placed directly under my beautiful, immature maple tree. And so I just ask that you please consider all of our quality of life of the people who live on Fox Lane when moving forward with this plan. And I apologize for crying through that entire thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But that's what we were just talking about, a 25-foot buffer continuously go, you know.
I think that would be really nice for.
Right, Greg, you would consider that?
So, I, I feel like I, I feel like I don't wanna put on the bad guy hat, but on the Manor Lane Estate subdivision, there are indicated 25-foot natural buffer areas on the northern side of Manor Lane, as well as the eastern side. Again, I'm not, you know, who did it, but it appears as though those buffers are no longer existent. So, I mean, there were required buffers on the existing map.
Okay.
Again, we, we don't, we typically don't buffer residential to residential, we typically buffer commercial to residential. But, I mean, that's just, again, considerations that those lots within the Fox Lane subdivision were supposed to have 25-foot natural buffers all around the outside of their property.
Okay, well, right now it's ink on paper, so, and it's a public hearing, we're taking input from the public, so we still have time to fix what we can fix.
Paul Davis, 8 Fox Lane.
Hello, Matt.
My 25-foot buffer is intact. Okay? And, to my knowledge, so are many of the others.
So that could be a little inaccurate, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone, Luke Ferland, 74 Fox Lane as well. I just had a few questions, it looks like the fire hydrant at the apex, the back of the cul-de-sac is gonna be moved to 74 Fox Lane. As my wife stated before, there's an oak tree there, little concerned about the tree, it's a beautiful tree, it's actually like one of the most gorgeous things you look at. I might be partial, but I doubt it. When you drive down and see that, I'm concerned about where it's gonna be located, that it's gonna tear up the root system. So that's just one of my concerns. You know, I'm not here to stop progress, I understand people pay taxes and they own land, and there's gonna be homes, so I do understand that. I just, just to echo what my wife said, I really do hope that there's a lot of care and, and genuine concern for the existing quality of life for people out here. We are blessed to live out here, every one of us that lives out here is, and it's nice to preserve what we can, especially that type of life that we have, a lot of people don't have this, so we don't wanna see that disappear. But we understand there could be homes, but, you know, try to do it in a nice way, it would be, that would be really nice. Are there any other impacts to 74 Fox Lane, other than the fire hydrant?
So, I would actually like to.
It's a public hearing, you have to do it at the microphone.
I would actually like to have a discussion with Mr. Ferland, because the notes on the Fox Lane subdivision map indicate that that cul-de-sac at the end of Fox Lane is supposed to be removed when there's push-through. So I'd like, I'd like to have a conversation with Mr. Ferland, probably involve the applicant. You know, the elimination of that cul-de-sac would obviously, they would essentially gain a little more grass, if there's a beautiful tree there, I would have no objection to keeping that cul-de-sac. But that's something I'd like to, you know, he, I can provide my contact information and we can have a discussion.
All right, if you could also contact the water department and find out where we can put it that it's appropriate, that's not offensive to anybody. Thank you, Greg.
I appreciate that, thank you. I guess, that was one of my points, is, you know, I've seen cul-de-sacs become developed before, and sometimes they look pretty goofy after they're done, right? You have this weird radius of a curb cut, that's just reminiscent of what was there. So, I don't know if there's a plan for that, I don't know how my other neighbors feel about that, but, you know, it might, it might look a little goofy at the end. And like I said, this is a pretty cool place that we get to live in. So it'd be nice if we could preserve some, you know, some of it. Let's see. Yep. Any reason why it was decided to be Fox Lane? Was the only access to the property, was that? Just curious, I have to ask the question. Get one bite of the apple.
So, in addition to the planned logical extension from the Manor Lane Estates, Zimacki Lane is only 50 feet wide, that does not serve as adequate access for a major subdivision. There was also early discussions with the Planning Board regarding that topic. Where Zimacki Lane comes out onto the main road, the speed limit's 50 miles an hour. As you, if you come off of Fox Lane, as the residents are aware, you come off of Fox Lane to Manor, traffic's a little bit calmer, the speed reduces, I believe there's a 35 mile per hour speed limit in the, along Main Road in the vicinity of Manor Lane. So the Planning Board, you know, was considered at that time that while eight single-family residences is by no means considered a significant trip generator in terms of traffic, the Planning Board felt that it was appropriate that any additional traffic would be best suited going onto Manor rather than additional traffic coming on Zimacki onto Main Road.
And I, I think this is my last one. So, as someone who's had a commute to the South Fork quite a bit through their career, any side road that can be utilized for time savings will be utilized, so I am just a little curious, is there any possibility of Zimacki in the future? I haven't had time to really examine too many things, this question came to my late. Is there any way for Zimacki to be connected to Fox in the future? I, I don't want that, because people will utilize that as a cut-through as the North Fork becomes busier and busier, which is the future of this place.
So, the way the map is designed and the way the plat is laid out, as you can see, there is a recharge basin proposed on the south side, as well as open space, so there would be no future connection to Zimacki. So, again, there's not gonna be a cut-through, people are not gonna try to, you know, zip through, and, not that there's a light on Manor, but no one's gonna try to cut through this to try to avoid traffic. So, in short, to Mr. Ferland's question, there will be no connection to Zimacki for this subdivision.
All right, that was it, thank you all so much, I pre- appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just have a last question for a minute.
Sure, gotta state your name again.
Larry Kaiser, 32 Zimacki Lane. Just curious, as the size or square footage of the house, houses that are proposed being built in this, I know it's not listed on the plot.
So when the Planning Board deals with a subdivision application, they're talking, they review a preliminary plat, there is no, right now, there are no lots that exist, there are no building permit applications. Right now, as it currently exists in the APZ, I believe there is a minimum 1,500 square foot size for single-family residences. That may or may not be amended by the Town Board as a recommendation of the comp plan, but right now, there is no, there are no proposed house plans, there's no building permit applications, these lots do not exist. So the Planning Board is not considering, the Planning Board doesn't review single-family residential building permit applications.
Question for the Planning Board now, is there a maximum size on the books?
Yeah, they're constrained by side yards, front yards.
Okay.
They're constrained by zoning.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask this is the gentleman brought up fact before, South Fork, okay, used to be a farming community, and they would build a, a bedroom house on a half-acre lot, let's be honest, we see it in South Jamesport all the time. Okay, so my, not my concern, my question is, is this going to be a three-bedroom, two-bath ranch, or is it going to be a six-bedroom, four-bath, in-ground, gunite pool?
We, we don't know.
I understand, but that's, that's why I was asking about the maximum building footprint.
Yeah.
Is that something you guys deal with, or the building?
No, that'll be Building Department.
Okay.
So, development of single-family residential lots, there are dimensional regulations in all our residential zoning districts, I believe the maximum lot coverage in the APZ is 15%. So that would include all, you know, driveways, pools, decks, you know, housing, basically any lot coverage cannot exceed 15%. There are building envelopes, so they would need, as you said, they would need to meet side, rear, front yard setbacks. To that point, if someone's gonna build a six-bedroom house, that they can fit within that building envelope, that fully complies with zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you, no questions.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Christina Yosa, I live at 73 Fox Lane. Could I just take a look at the?
Certainly, sure.
So, this is Fox Lane right now, this is a northern orientation.
Okay, so this is where the recharge basin is, so presumably this would be my house here. 73 Fox Lane, Christopher Prunty, yes.
So, yeah, so there will, there are screening requirements for within the recharge basin, and I believe there's an existing, like I said, from this map, there is a 25-foot buffer that was required on your property.
There is currently a 25-foot buffer there.
Yeah, so the buffer on your property will remain, and then they will be, there will be additional screening within the recharge basin.
You have copies of these?
If you, I can, I can send you a copy.
You should have.
So, as far as that water recharge.
It's on the website, if you wanna look online.
Basin.
Yes.
Does that area get fenced in, or is it gonna remain open, it will be fenced in? Okay. And is that cleared at any point? Because now my house will be next to standing water, presumably, with bugs and mosquitoes in our backyard, West Nile going around, is that anything that?
Most of those don't hold water.
They don't hold water?
No, they're in sand, they drain.
Okay, I have seen in other towns where there is quite significant amount of water that are in those recharge basins, so that's why I bring that up.
If I, I mean, we have the project engineer here, I mean, maybe the engineers could speak to percolation if they anticipate. This is typically a recharge basin where it will percolate down, there will typically not be standing water, but maybe we can have the project engineer speak to that aspect?
Good evening, Joseph Marks, professional engineer with Bara Pinachi and Dan Wheel, doing business in Hop Dog. This is in clean sand, the recharge basin's not gonna hold water, everything will perk into the ground.
Thank you.
It's just very concerning to me, because I did not buy this property with the intention of a recharge basin being right next to us. We currently have some buffer there, woods, we have a neighbor that is basically right diagonal of that on Zimecki. My concern is of why our street has to be opened up when Zimecki has a straight run to the property. They spoke of speed limit, there's speeds up by Manor Lane that are just as fast. You can't make a left out onto the road without taking off the nose of your car. So as far as speed limit, it would be feasible for people to make a left or a right on, from Zimecki Lane, I wish you would take that into consideration. We do live on a quiet road, we would like to keep it a quiet road. My son, as others have spoke about, don't have to worry about cars. We don't, it's, and it's nice, he rides his bike on the street and I can send him down, and I don't have to worry about him getting hit by a car with somebody who's going to be doing 35 miles an hour down our little residential street, that is only measured at 28 feet. They speak that Zimecki is 50 feet, obviously there it's a little bit wider. So please just take those into consideration, it's quite a disruption to us, our noise barrier from Main Road will now be disturbed, the noise barrier from the, the sod fields that is there, that is quite disruptive, will be disturbed. If you could please take that in consideration, that would be wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Carol Higgins, 62 Fox Lane. And I stand with my neighbors. Obviously, we're concerned about the quality of life that we've enjoyed living on Fox Lane, and understand the value of our property and the safety aspect of our property is gonna go down because of this pass-through with Fox Lane. So, we just hope you'll keep that into consideration and respect our quality of life and the wildlife. All of that's gonna get destroyed, I have deer, rabbits, foxes, I have all of that in my backyard, and they're gonna have nowhere to go now.
Ma'am.
Thank you.
12 acres will be, will be saved. 12 acres of the wooded property will not be touched.
I'm sure they'll be grateful, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
I'm sorry. There's nobody with their hand raised, but someone just came in, so let me admit that.
I just have one more question, I'm sorry.
Give your name again, I'm sorry.
Why did only one of us receive notice of this meeting? Only one of our neighbors got notice. So I'm curious as to why the law only sent this out.
He's checking right now, who got the notice?
Sorry? And I'm home all day, so.
Hmm, let's see, what is your? 200 feet, what is the address?
62 Fox Lane.
It's possible you might not be within 200 feet.
I might next to it, to live.
So we provide, we provide a mailing list for property owners, for the, we provide a 200-foot radius mailing list, that's what the applicants responsible for providing is, for 200 feet.
Okay.
I mean, if that's the case, you may not be within 200 feet.
I'll have to measure it, thank you.
I'm within the.
Just give your name again, please.
Christina Yosa, 73 Fox Lane.
Thank you.
I'm within the 200 feet, and we did not receive notification of this meeting.
I mean, I have a certified return receipt from the United States Postal Service, postmarked October 30th, to 73 Fox Lane.
Christina Yosa, 73 Fox Lane, whose name signed to that?
It's the proof of posting. So it's the proof of posting.
It's not return receipt requested.
It's not that you received it, it's that it was mailed to you on a certain date, that's the requirement. So they have to send it to you, return receipt, if it doesn't get to you.
It didn't get to us, 'cause I did not get notification, I only knew of this meeting because we had someone come to do soil samples, and my husband approached the woman, and the woman said, "Oh, they're gonna develop here, they're gonna open up your dead end, and you're gonna go, they're gonna go to the left." I then went to the town and got the meeting notes from the July meeting, and Mr. Bergman's, the planner's name and address, and I actually forwarded that all to my neighbors, because otherwise we wouldn't have known about this.
Was the property posted, Greg?
Yes, properly.
Thank you.
Heather?
Um, there's no one on Zoom with their hand raised.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? Gentlemen, anything?
No.
I move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, may we have a vote, please? Mr. Zlinicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carries, thank you. All right, let's move right into discussion items. Item number one, Pasrano Residence Number 219, with Heather.
How are you? No. This is, this is my husband's best friend's mom, second mom.
Who were your second mom?
I knew you were, say hi to her.
I will, have a good night.
Take care, hon.
Is there anyone here for 834 Sound Shore Road? No? Okay, I guess.
I have your email, right?
It's just me.
Your Luke Ferling, but she may.
This is a Chapter 219 application for a property located at 834 Sound Shore Road in Jamesport, Suffolk County, Tax Funt Number 8-1-8. They're looking to demolish the existing bungalow that's there and build a new two-story single-family dwelling with a full basement further landward from the Seehaw line and top of the bluff, but they're also installing a 20-by-48-and-a-half-foot in-ground pool. They will be installing a new sanitary system and water service, that's all within the coastal erosion hazard area, hence why they had to make an application to the board. Proposed action is a Type 2 action pursuant to SEACRA, as it's the construction of a single-family dwelling and accessory structures. It's within the residence A40 zoning use district, located on the north side of Sound Shore Road. The surrounding area is primarily residential in nature. Just to go over a quick property history, this is outside of the Chapter 219 jurisdiction, but there is a detached structure on the property that the applicant is proposing to partially demolish and make alterations to it to create an accessory apartment, which they can do by town code, as long as they abide by the accessory apartment rules, properties owner occupied, and that will tie into the new sanitary system that they're proposing. I did note that on a site inspection, the southern end of the property, which fronts on Sound Shore Road, they, it's labeled as a wooded lowland, but there, it's populated with frag mites, which is indicative of water. And I actually went through the property, the old property files, and on a prior survey, it's shown as a pond. So I did reach out to the applicant, as noted in my staff report, the last page. I asked if they could get a certified environmental consultant or professional to go out there and verify if it's a freshwater wetland or not, and if it is, they'll have to flag the wetlands and the buffers, just because that construction happening on the southern end of the property might kick them to CAC jurisdiction.
So Heather, would they have to, like, put hay bales around just to make sure no construction material?
Yes, and I mean, as it stands, the project area, I don't know if you saw, they have it noted on the survey with a dash line. They are proposing hay bales and silt fence, silt fencing to prevent erosion during construction. I will note that pursuant to Chapter 219-14 Subsection B, the construction that they're proposing isn't specifically allowed. It's considered development under Chapter 219. So because, even though they're moving the house further landward from the Seehaw line, they do have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as that board is the designated coastal erosion hazard board of review. So they'll have to look at the proposed construction, both the house and the pool, and also the existing hot tub that's there, which was put there without permits, I'm assuming prior to these applicants buying the property. I just wanted to bring it to the planning board for discussion first, go over SEACRA, and then they've already made an application to the zoning board, their appeal will be heard next week at the meeting on the 14th.
I saw in the staff report pictures of, where is the drainage coming from?
Yeah.
And through that pipe? And where is it going to, and is it causing any erosion?
So that's a question that I had asked the applicant's design professional, because I noticed the drainage inlet on the plant that they had submitted. So when I went out there, I took pictures, it's proximate to where the hot tub is. And then I went down the stairs to the beach, which are actually, they're very stable and intact. No work is proposed there. No work is proposed to the existing bulkhead, which looks fine at the toe of the bluff, but that drainage pipe, I didn't, you know, walk on the bluff, but I'm assuming the picture that I have there, that pipe connects to that drainage inlet.
Yeah, goes down the drain.
Yeah, I think, I think we need a little more information on that.
Yeah, I, so I had asked them to provide some more information, you know, it would be preferable for it to be removed and for them to, you know, if they're installing new drainage associated with the construction that they're proposing in the 219 application, to maintain all that stormwater on-site, obviously prevent any sort of runoff from going down the bluff base, preventing future erosion. But again, they will be going through the zoning board process, and if the zoning board grants the relief from 219, then they'll come back to this board, and I'm hoping at that time they'll have much more information to provide the board.
Upgraded chapter.
I have, I do have a question on the various ZBA and Planning Board resolutions, and it was Resolution Number 3 on your list. And it basically says that we approve coastal erosion hazard permit for bluff restoration.
Yeah, so they must have done some, like, terracing. I'm not sure if you recall the property directly to the west, the Winkler property. They did bluff restoration. As you may recall, they didn't require any zoning board relief, but they did need a Chapter 219 permit. So bluff restoration, bluff cuts done in accordance with, you know, the provisions of the chapter, those are permitted activities.
Yeah.
So I went back through aerials, and it, it looks like they did some bluff terracing and new plantings. It was a long time ago, so it's kind of hard to tell at this point.
I'm just wondering exactly what was done.
Yeah, I'd have to pull the other files, unfortunately.
Something was done, though.
Yeah, unfortunately, some of the resolutions weren't as detailed as they are now, but I can try to find the staff report and who had worked on it at that time. Unfortunately, none of us were in the planning department in 2010, but.
Heather, what's the minimum from the pool to the bluff that, that is required?
So it goes, it's based off of the Seehaw line. Typically, we don't want to see any construction seaward of the Seehaw line. And in with, so within jurisdiction, it's a 50-foot setback. So it's not that they're not allowed to do it, it just requires them to get a 219 permit. And in this case, the pool itself isn't a permitted construction activity, that's why they have to go to the zoning board. In terms of property line setbacks, they're more than, they're far enough away from the northern property boundary. They don't need any area variances for the proposed pool and the new house. And they're well within their maximum purview surface coverage with the improvement. So again, no area variances, just relief from the zoning board.
Okay, all the side setbacks are fine?
Yes.
So they're removing basically 11 feet by 24.5 feet from this one-story frame guest house, which was, which is what we see in Figure 2, correct?
Yes.
So they're removing that side one, and then they're making this habitable. So the garage is going to be totally taken down?
So they're showing it as selective demolition, so the garage is sort of that odd shape, and it looks like they're taking out the middle portion. And they're going to, I don't know if they're rebuilding on the existing foundation, I don't have the construction plans in front of me, but they're proposing to maintain that structure, I'm assuming because it has a CO already, and they need to adhere to the accessory apartment code, because as it's written, you have to have a CO in place for at least three years in order to even go for an accessory apartment permit.
So this, so number six is, just that we get a vacuancy, excuse me, one-story attached garage, bathroom, workshop. And then four states with the condition that the structure have no habitable space.
Yes, so I can't speak as to how the current structure, the condition of it now, but when it was approved by the zoning board and the building department, when they received that certificate of occupancy, they were permitted to have a one-car attached garage with a bathroom and workshop, and the carport was included in that. Obviously, if they apply for an accessory apartment permit to convert that to fully habitable space, they're permitted to do that by code. I would think it would supersede that certificate of occupancy. But again, that's not in the jurisdiction of the 219 application. I just did it as, you know, a historical reference. So did the board have any other questions? Unfortunately, I don't have anyone here from the application, but I'll certainly get more information from you, for you, especially regarding that drainage inlet and pipe.
Yeah. And find out how, how far the wet, that wetlands.
Yeah, if it is, well, yeah, they're working on it now, I spoke with.
I see several other properties have pretty much the same.
Yes.
All right, moving on to discussion item number two, TJOC Real Estate Holdings LLC, with Greg.
Thank you, Heather.
So TJOC, Greg.
All right, TJOC, I will keep this brief. TJOC, as the board will recall, we issued a positive declaration on the proposed TJOC development. It involves a major subdivision and a site plan for a mixed-use commercial development. The board, on October 17th, issued a positive declaration requiring the full formal process of an environmental impact statement. The applicant submitted a draft scope for the EIS to us on October 31st. Under the secret guidelines, there is no option for a lead agency to reject a draft scope. So the submission of that draft scope started a timeline. The lead board as lead agency has 60 days to adopt a final scope. What that final scope does is set the parameters of everything that's going to be studied and looked at and analyzed within the environmental impact statement. Based on the board's comments at the last meeting, the desire was to hold a public scoping hearing. So the resolution that I have before the board today is to schedule that public scoping hearing. It will be at the December 5th, 2024 meeting, which is an evening meeting at 6:00 PM. The draft scope will be posted on the town's website. The draft scope will also be made available and distributed to involved agencies. If we have the hearing on December 5th, that puts us in a position to adopt the final scope at the following meeting on the 19th and fully comply with that 60-day timeline.
Greg, are the homes on the STP also, or is it just a commercial?
The entire development is on the STP, so the residential homes, as well as the mixed-use development, will all tie into that and STP.
There's one other word in here that I don't like, that I want to try to avoid. I'm on page three, where it says minimal anticipated light-related impacts. I don't like that word, anticipated.
There are, I will provide a full report for the board for the public hearing. There are some, what I call presumptive language in there, that they're almost sort of coming to a conclusion before we've had a chance to any, really perform any analysis. So I will have a full review and a full report from staff and, and on the draft scope, and we'll make it open to the public as well.
Okay, just want to make sure there's not a lot of gray areas.
Oh, no, it, we're going to, we're going to eliminate any, anything that sort of comes to a foregone conclusion.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Well, and Greg, just one question, is there any way getting another draft on the change of the?
So one of the things that SEACRA allows you to do is look at alternative developments. I know I've had conversations with members Zelnicki. We had actually, when we had pre-submission meetings with this applicant prior to the formal submission, the board will recall the, what I'll call the long end, you know, the, the building is oriented along Middle Country Road in an east-to-west orientation. Members Zelnicki had wanted to see an alternative design where it's essentially in a north-to-south orientation. The thought is that that would sort of, if you've got people living in those apartments on the second floor and they're 50 feet off of Middle Country Road, you know, noise, light, that sort of thing. So that's something that we could probably look at through one of the alternative designs through the EIS process.
Okay. The project completely adheres to the zoning in here, is that correct?
Correct, completely, completely complots with the zoning, but through an EIS process, we can typically really fine-tune it and get a better, better project for everybody.
Great. Anybody? Those guys? Okay, thank you.
Are you taking questions?
No.
Like CSI plan?
You can, when, when it's time for comments, you may speak on anything that you like, but right now, we're in the middle of a meeting.
Thank you.
You won't. Moving on to number three, 230 West Main Street, minor subdivision, once again with Greg.
Thank you. So this is a subdivision, a minor subdivision that the board is considering seeking to subdivide an existing 15,557-square-foot parcel and create two lots, one lot having a size of 7,153 square feet, lot two having a size of 7,404 square feet. It's Zoned DC3, Downtown Center 3. The application required approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The proposed lot widths were both 45.11 feet, or 50 feet is required. The applicant received that relief by determination dated September 12th, 2024. There were some conditions. I would just like to correct the record, when I was before the board last time presenting this application, I had made some recommendations about shared access and cross-parking. We've been having some issues with our GIS system, so the, the property actually is located within the parking district. So at any time that these parcels come in for redevelopment, they are actually not required to provide onsite parking, so that really would affect that recommendation and sort of nullify the requirement for it. They're not required to provide parking.
So Greg, where would they park?
Public parking. That's, that's the perfect, that's the purpose of a public parking district.
Where is their parking for those two lots?
Town parking, you know.
Just, just to the east.
All the lots in the town.
Town parking lot.
That's all in the parking district.
Yeah, it's the purpose of the public parking district. So just clarify, clarify, just clear it up, just have a resolution to schedule a public hearing on that subdivision application, now that they've got their variances.
All right, don't go anywhere, Greg, we're going to talk about number four, Holly Estates, minor subdivision.
Thank you, all right. So this is a subdivision that, believe it or not, has been kicking around before the planning board since 2009. Kimberly Judd is currently the attorney on it. The applicant has been through a number of attorneys. Sean Walter actually initially handled this before he was elected to office, so that's how far back this goes. When this subdivision application was sort of revived by the planning board, we had held a public hearing on it again. We issued an approval resolution in November 2019. We've had several extension resolutions since then. They've gone through, they've had a really tough time. Their surveyor kind of bailed on them. They've just had a lot of hard times trying to get this thing over the finish line. So I do have a final extension resolution on. They did satisfy all of those conditions of the original 2019 approval. They filed the CNRs, the Common Driveway Easements. They had a approved stormwater pollution prevention plan, and they finally got approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services on August 30th. So all of the conditions are met. I'm happy to say that the board can grant this final approved, the final extension. I have the maps ready for you to sign, they can get this thing done.
Great. Anybody?
No, Greg, that's, it's two building lots plus the house that's there.
There's an existing house, and there would be, there's two new building lots, correct?
All right, once again with Greg, item number five, CAV 896 LLC for administrative site plan.
All right, so wrapping this one up, this is an application to convert approximately 3,200 square feet of existing commercial space at the existing oncology center next to Burger King on County Route 58. As the board will recall, we had, we adopted a resolution in September of 2024, it was Resolution Number 24-065, that authorized the extinguishment of an existing CNR that had to deal with busing of employees from an offsite location. The applicant filed that CNR, they, we lifted that restriction, which allowed them to process an application with the Zoning Board of Appeals for a requested relief of 41 parking stalls. The applicant did obtain that relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it was subject to the condition of an offer of mitigation by the applicant to be accepted by the planning board wherein a change in the oncology treatment uses for the medical office approved, subject to site plan in 2019, and the proposed expansion of the oncology cancer treatment, 3,169 square feet, be limited to that type of medical use, and that any change of medical use would require applicant to seek site plan approval and/or relief as appropriate based on, based on, quote, "such other medical uses or such other different uses, be it retail or anything else." So long and short of it is, the parking study that the applicant provided for this application demonstrated that they were nowhere near, even at their busiest times, they were nowhere near filling that parking lot. They received the necessary variances, so I do have an administrative approval on one of the major conditions that we're going to be carrying through from the ZBA. going to be carrying through from the ZBA, I have spoken with the applicant, uh, they're comfortable, they're okay with it, we're going to require a declaration of CNRs in a form by council, approved, approved by council to the planning board, which shall restrict the use of the building as, on those areas depicted on the March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four floor plan, consistent with ZBA appeal number twenty-four-dash-sixteen, and consistent with the applicant's offer of mitigation regarding use of the building, that any expansion of occupied space or a change in the use of the building to any use other than oncology treatment shall require a new site plan to be submitted to the planning board and shall address any outstanding site plan issues, including but not limited to parking supply.
Very good.
Are they still going to have to bus their employees?
Uh, no, that was one that they, through the review process, they've never actually had to utilize that provision, because they've never exceeded their existing park, you know, the parking supply has never been an issue during the, the five years of treatment, so they've never had to employ that, that's why we extinguished that covenant, uh, but it will be replaced with a covenant controlling the use, which the applicant gets some additional use of that building, provides a necessary service for cancer patients, will not overwhelm their parking supply, but if they do change to another type of busier medical office, such as a, uh, pediatrics office or a, you know, dermatology office, they would be required to come back to the planning board for site plan review.
Yeah, Greg, that's, yeah, one of the problems I have is that, I have no problems with the oncology center at all, because I've been there several times and always plenty of space, but in the future, Northwell is growing and it's getting bigger, I just don't want to kick the can down the road, they should look into more parking, better parking, you know, because you just can't keep going into other areas.
That, that's, that's what that CNR, I believe, effectively captures and will sort of, you know, this site had a, it's got a long history of expansion in ZBA over the years, so, I, I think this kind of puts a firm end to where an applicant can sort of realize a benefit from the property, but where's, the board would still be comfortable that there are controls in place where it's not going to change to another use that would overwhelm the parking supply, so, happy to get this one done as well.
Very good. Got any room right now? Okay, thanks, Greg, um, right now, we're gonna go public comments on resolutions. Nobody. Gentlemen, let's do.
Yeah, I have a question, sorry.
Somebody here.
Hello?
Who's just jumping in?
I said Zoom, can we keep the Zoom?
Zoom's only for public hearings.
It records the meeting, though.
Oh, okay. It's okay. Uh, gentlemen, resolutions?
Yeah, I'll move resolution number eighty-four, schedule a public hearing on minor subdivision entitled The Malice Property on eighty, on Second Street in South Jamesport.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution eighty-five for two-thirty West Main Street for minor subdivision to schedule a public hearing, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I move resolution number twenty-twenty-four zero-eight-six, Holly Estates Minor Subdivision, resolution granting an extension of the, for, of approval for a minor subdivision, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution zero-eighty-seven, TJOC Real Estate Holdings LLC, resolution to schedule a public scoping hearing on a draft scope submitted pursuant to SEACRA.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro? Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution twenty-twenty-four zero-eighty-eight, CAV eight-ninety-six LLC, resolution granting administrative site plan approval for the site plan, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And before I vote, I'm gonna say, there might be a little parking issue, but the oncology centers are so needed in this day and time, I'm happy to vote yes. Public comments on all matters. Okay, okay, and I want to do the minutes.
I'll move the minutes of, um, October third, twenty-twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move the minutes of October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Staff, any other business? I know you guys had a long day today.
Thirsty.
Huh?
Thirsty.
Okay, no other business, no correspondence. Our next meeting date will be Thursday, November twenty-first, at three PM, thank you all for coming and have a great day.